Anybody have any corrections or to be managed from the last meeting? If not, they'll shall stand as presented. Next is public comment if you're here and would like to speak to the commissioner on something that's not on the agenda. This is a time to get up and take a couple of minutes. Seeing none, we'll move on to six A.
Mayor and Commissioners, item six A, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request by the Garden City Fire Department personnel to waive code section sixty-two fifteen unlawful solicitation to allow for department personnel to collect donations for the NDA boot block, boot block on August twenty-eighth of nine thirty a.m. to three p.m. Staff recommends approval. The request is consistent with the boot block in years past.
I move that we approve the request from the Garden City Fire Department.
Yeah, I'll second. I have a motion and second to approve the request for the Mexican Dystrophy Association boot block. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item B, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a request from Angelica Castillo Chapel, president of the community Mexican Fiesta, to waive the sign fees and place a four-by-six sign at the following locations. The southeast corner of Lewis Automotive at Camp Stridenfold Street, the northwest corner of Stevens Park, and on the south side of Mary Street at the Garden City High School entrance. This would be for a period of two weeks lasting until September tenth, two thousand sixteen. This request is similar to what we did last year. Staff recommends approval.
I move we approve the request for the Mexican Fiesta signage.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second for the waiver for the signage for the community Mexican Fiesta. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
And Mayor, item six C, the governing body has asked to approve allowing you to proclaim September first, two thousand sixteen as Charles Chuck Booley Day in Garden City. And our staff, and I know the commissioner as well, wish to extend our thanks to Chuck and congratulate him on his upcoming retirement. So if you want to read the proclamation, Mayor, and have Chuck showing it up front, that would be appropriate.
I make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second to approve the proclamation. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All of us opposed?
Just kind of touch and go there.
Well, you know.
Whereas Charles Chuck Booley has been financial advisor for the city of Garden City since nineteen eighty-seven. Whereas as municipal advisor, Mr. Booley has advised the city on bond offerings, has been registered with the Securities and Exchange Commission, and has been subject to fiduciary duties and other federal state regulations. And whereas over nearly three decades, Mr. Booley assisted the city of Garden City with forty-six general obligation bond issues totaling one hundred and thirty-nine million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And whereas Mr. Booley saw interest rates on these issues ranging from seven point five at the highest in nineteen eighty-eight to one point seven two at the lowest in twenty-twelve. And whereas Mr. Booley has announced his plans to retire effective September first, two thousand sixteen. Now therefore, I, Chris Law, Mayor of the city of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September first, two thousand sixteen, as Charles Chuck Booley Day. Garden City, Kansas, urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for his significant contributions to the community and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his responsibilities and duty to his financial burden. Sign and seal this sixteenth day of August, two thousand sixteen, Chris Law. If I understand correctly, if we were to rewrite this, the lowest number would come down today, so.
Thank you. It's a fun surprise. I've never had a daily income from you. I might just add that Garden City has been one of my favorite last work with forever. Obviously, I've been here a long time. You know, they have a very talented and incredible staff. They're just easy to work with, and I've got a lot of good friends because of that from here, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Item seven A, now the giving a report from Linda Hitz and Amy Perkins on a new interactive voice response payment service. And this is a service that's going to be starting on Chuck Booley Day.
We just wanted to come before you and just let you know that starting September first, there is going to be a different way that the phone is answered downstairs in our office. It's just going to be for the main line, the eleven-hundred number. It'll answer with a saying somewhat like this, "You have reached the city of Garden City. If you'd like to make a utility payment, press one. If not, stay on the line." And then when you stay on the line, you'll go to a live operator. So you can get your calls away from there. But we have noticed such an increase in credit card payments over the last year, and I think it's due to the rewards or miles that you can get on credit card purchases. So our girls have been very busy on the phone with those types of things. So this service, what it will do, it's a three-dollar charge to use it, but you'll be speaking with a secure person on the other end. They have worked out everything. They'll post the payment right to your account. So there's going to be no work on our end once they make that payment. We used to have to post all of those payments when they would call in to us, so it was pretty time-consuming. This will be kind of like our Live Box where your checks go to Kansas City, everything gets posted. So we're pretty happy about it, and we just wanted to let you know that this is a new service, and I think a lot of people will be using it.
Can you still bring a payment in and get on a credit card?
Yes, if you.
But there's no charge on that?
Right.
Just if you use this service?
Right. If you're out of town, I think it's a great service to have, so. Any questions?
And you can also check account balances?
Yes.
Couple more options here, too.
Right. There will be several things that we can do on down the line that will keep you informed about once they get set up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven B, Jared Colons here, and he will provide you with a presentation on municipal court.
Hi, Mayor and Commissioners. Mr. DeZalma, thank you for the presentation. I've got a clicker. We'll see if it works. So I hope to be able to give you a little bit of an idea of some of the changes we've seen in the municipal court over the last six years, some of the efficiencies we've been able to develop, and some of the things we've been able to do as far as personnel and as far as dealing with the public and the clients to be able to facilitate their process through the municipal court in the fastest way possible.
Okay, I'm gonna.
That works. Okay, so from the next slide.
Okay.
The primary change. The most recent change we've made is to our court schedule. The primary change here, you can see Tuesdays, we used to not have court. We moved our trials to Tuesday mornings, and we moved our first appearances to Wednesday mornings. There are a couple of reasons for us doing this. The first was to facilitate the judge being a part-time position, so he wouldn't have to stay all day on a Wednesday. We also had a few instances where our Wednesday morning trials would run a little longer than we anticipated and interfere with our Wednesday first appearances beginning at one-thirty. So moving them to two separate days, we were able to avoid that conflict. We're also able to explain it to people when they have a bench warrant or they're hoping to make a voluntary appearance. We used to have to tell them, we have Wednesday afternoon and Monday, Wednesday, Thursday mornings. Saying Monday through Thursday at eight-thirty is a little easier and a little more capable for them to remember when they have to move their court date. So we've definitely seen some positives from this. Haven't really seen any negatives whatsoever, so we're pretty happy with the schedule and plan to continue to do the same schedule going forward in the coming years. The next slide. We've had quite a change in our department personnel. You can see that prior to this, prior to two thousand twelve, we had those multiple positions actually totaled up eight positions in the court as well as a position in the city prosecutor's office for the diversion coordinator. We have since put the diversion coordinator, the probation officer, and the court administrator together into one position, which is what I now hold. We've eliminated one of the court clerks, and the judge is now a half-time employee. And so we've gone from nine total employees, two thousand twelve, to five and a half now. So being able to facilitate removing some of those employee positions, we've been able to cut down a little bit on our budget, a little bit on the financial strain of our department and the number of personnel we have working throughout the department. You can see on the next slide, the financial impact of that decision and those changes has definitely made quite an impact for our department, an annual savings at this point of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's also going to exponentially grow as those employees would have gotten raises or they would have seen benefit increases. So that's an annual savings that's going to continue to grow as we go throughout more time. You can see that our numbers in the court, our caseloads have decreased quite extensively over the last few years. If you look back to two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, we're over six thousand cases in our court, and now we're at a projection for this year about thirty-three hundred, so almost half. However, our year-end totals have been fairly consistent in what we've been able to bring in as far as recovering fines and court costs and fees from the people going through the court. Our amount per case, you can see, has doubled. It's a good thing because it subsidizes the lack of the tickets that we've had coming through. And so the graphs just kind of demonstrate a little bit of that. You can see the filings really has taken quite a drastic step off, but that year-end top-right graph is showing fairly stable. You'll see in two thousand thirteen, we were able to make over a million dollars in the court. A lot of that had to do with implementing the review policy that you guys were able to accept, where people have a thirty, sixty, four-ninety day recovery period on their case, where it was definitely able to facilitate a faster recovery on those fines and court costs. Prior to that, a lot of defendants had very longstanding continual recovery times, and there wasn't a whole lot of push to get them to pay their cases. And so by implementing that process, we definitely saw an increase. And as spike that years, we recovered a lot of the prior cases, and we've seen a pretty consistent number over the next few years. The next one. One of the reasons we've been able to keep our amount per case very high, I've been able to facilitate keeping the total annual revenue high, has been through programs such as diversion and fast track. Diversion program is for mostly criminal cases such as DUI, possession of marijuana, domestic battery for first-time offenders, for people above a very light criminal history. In their first offense, they're able to do community service. They're able to pay an extra diversion fee of three hundred and fifty dollars for criminal cases or a hundred and fifty dollars for traffic cases. And as they do evaluations and classes and things to somewhat pay back the community for the damage they did and then hopefully learn and grow from the experience. It benefits the defendant, the individual, so that they don't have an impact on their criminal record, but also has an impact on the city financially as well. You can see that prior to two thousand twelve, I don't really have the data. There's a couple of reasons for that. It was hard to go through the organization of the prior employees and pull up the data. But my best estimate and guess, and what I have seen, would be that we were around a hundred diversions or less for the years prior to two thousand twelve. We've seen that number go up a lot, and that revenue has increased quite a bit through that program. Fast track even more so has increased over the past few years. The fast track program is for an individual who has a speeding ticket or moving violation of any kind who doesn't have another moving violation in the past twelve months. They qualify for fast track where they pay an extra hundred and fifty dollars on their case, and we amend it to a non-moving violation such as an defective muffler or defective taillight. This impacts them artificially so that the insurance, their insurance won't know that they had a moving violation. The state won't receive a moving violation conviction, which would then affect their license as they forget those four moving violations that could face a suspension. And again, it impacts the city financially as well. So those numbers have definitely helped to keep that annual revenue up, even though we've seen that decrease in case number. We've also cut down on our probation cases. One of the issues with probation is that what would be a sixty or ninety day recovery on the fines across an individual ends up taking more, close to six or twelve months depending on their probation term. We have some cases we've kept, we've continued to put on probation such as DUI and domestic battery. There's mandatory classes we want the client, the defendants to view, such as the batteries adventure program or DUI evaluation. So probation definitely helps facilitate monitoring that they do those things. But some of our other cases, for a first-time theft or battery, we felt that a twelve-month supervisory period wasn't necessarily the most efficient way to handle a case. So by eliminating those cases on probation, they've been able to pay their case off in a sixty- or ninety-day review policy period. We've been able to cut down the amount of cases we more intensely supervise for a twelve-month period. Our numbers on our court-appointed attorneys has definitely decreased over the past few years. One of the reasons this has been able to go down is because our city prosecutor, Mr. Delmore, is very, very good at handling the clients that come to our court, working with them, reaching agreements with them to be able to find a way that it helps the defendant pay the crime they did, but yet not do something so vicious that they feel they need an attorney to represent them going to jail. Mr. Delmore is very understanding with all the clients that come through. So we've seen that number decrease. However, every client goes to court, has a note that's facing a justice and has the opportunity to request a court-appointed attorney. So this number is a little bit out of our control as far as we can't deny that from anybody, and we shouldn't. But we've seen it go down quite a bit. Our goal is to keep it under a hundred thousand, and that's what we're shooting for this year. One of the issues the city faces with court-appointed attorneys is that immediately upon terminating the case or the defendant being found guilty, we're billed by the attorneys for that three hundred or three hundred and fifty dollars for the last two-year attorney fee. But then we have to go collect that from the defendant, and sometimes it takes a while or we don't get that, and the city is then paid for that court-appointed attorney for the defendant. So that's why we're motivated to keep these low, to work with people, to avoid having to use a court-appointed attorney and collecting as much as possible. You can see, I think, at the bottom here, it did change in two thousand and fifteen where the court-appointed attorneys were being paid three hundred and fifty dollars instead of three hundred dollars as it was in two thousand and fourteen and prior. So that's increased a certain amount. Another big hole or issue for our department has been the case directors in the collections. We've been able to cut down on the number of cases that we've been sending to collections pretty drastically over the past few years. You can see in two thousand sixteen, alone, sixty-seven of the cases that we have referred this year are cases that have been on a two-year limitation period. From two years ago they were in court, haven't done, they're supposed to do, and then with no content for two years, we then send them to collections. So the amount of our total caseload that's actively being sent to collections in any period is about five percent of our cases. So we do a pretty good job of collecting on those without having to send that to collections. You can see the total amounts and the case total value sent to collections as well. We definitely do keep that down, and our goal would be zero. I don't know if we'll ever get there, but we're definitely trying. In summary, you can see that over the past seven years, we've cut down three and a half fewer employees for the department overall. We have approximately half the caseload that we did in two thousand and twelve, but we've kept nearly an equivalent annual income. So that doubling the per-case amount coming in has definitely been able to keep that number up. We've increased the number of diversion and fast track programs. We've decreased the number of probation stuff we've had to supervise, decreased the number of court-appointed attorneys and the cases being sent to collection. Going forward, on the next slide, we have a few more goals to hopefully expedite our processes and even become more efficient. We plan to go paperless. The city prosecutor's office has begun the process of becoming paperless, and we're working out some of the kinks through their office before we go through the actual municipal court. The record systems through municipal court need to be saved longer and a little more sensitive as far as keeping records for a long period of time. So we want to make sure we can work out the bugs before we really implement the process. So that's at least the benefit we have to try and err first. It'll save on overhead. It'll save on the time it takes to create cases and file folders. It's also going to make us more efficient handling cases. All of our previous cases that are archived at this point will be able to be scanned in and electronically attached to our system as it is, and we can get rid of a lot of storage space as well, and that's definitely beneficial. We also hope to clean up our bench warrants. At this point, and at any point, we typically have around seven hundred and fifty active bench warrants, which at our per-case value at this point would equivalent to about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fines and court costs. We hope to be able to reduce that and be able to reduce the number of two-year limitations we have to send to collections and let these people facilitate in fixing their cases. One of the goals we have is to have an amnesty week or an amnesty day, something of that nature, where we allow people to come in and not face being arrested on their bench warrants, take care of their case, resolve their case, and hopefully be able to let them live a little less worrisome lives and take care of what they've been avoiding for some time. And the other thing is sustainability. One of the issues that we've looked at and tried to address is if we did go back to six thousand cases per year, would we be able to facilitate that with our lesser staff? And I absolutely, hundred percent believe we would. And the numbers that I understand in looking at our cases, the majority of the cases we're missing or has decreased has been traffic cases, which would be handled at the window, which wouldn't put a whole lot of burden on the court itself, but the clerks at the window, and they would have the ability to handle those pretty efficiently and quickly. The number of DUIs, domestic batteries, cases that typically go through the court has more or less remained the same over the past five years. So it seems like those traffic cases have gone down. So I definitely think we'd be able to sustain that model. And with my estimated projection, we'd be over a million, four hundred thousand, somewhere in that range if we were able to keep our per-case value the same and continue with more so along the six thousand cases per year. So that's a little snapshot into our department. We have great employees. I'll give them the credit. That's why our model works. That's why we're able to facilitate the numbers we have. Our department is the best department in the city. I don't know if you're aware of this. But our employees really are what make it work, and they do a great job. And we've been able to sustain that model for a while, and we'll do something like court.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jared?
Good job. Thank you.
Item C is a normal correspondence from Cox Communications required by their franchise. And then you have staff reports from the airport, Certs and Finance, the fire department, the police department, and the Richardson Zoo. If you have questions on any of those reports, we'd be happy to try to answer those. Hearing none, we'll call your attention to the meetings of note. There's quite a list there. Any of those things require RSVPs. You can do that through C-LIN. We would note that there is five Tuesdays this month, which means on the thirtieth?
Yeah, thirtieth.
Two weeks from today at seven p.m. Past practice would have the commission have a town hall meeting here at the city administrative center. Unless we hear outrage to that, we'll.
I don't know. Sometime people are not thinking about meetings, but I don't know. Last time we didn't have a very good turnout.
Boys never know, so. I think we have it that.
Have it, yeah. See who shows up.
I think we move forward with that.
Item nine A then is the appropriation ordinance. If you approve it, it's number twenty-four seventeen dash two thousand sixteen A.
I move we approve the appropriations ordinance twenty-four seventeen dash two thousand sixteen A.
I'll second.
A motion and second to approve appropriation ordinance number twenty-four seventeen dash two thousand sixteen A. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The governing body has asked to consider and approve the standard traffic ordinance and the Uniform Public Defense Code for two thousand sixteen. Item A one would be ordinance number twenty-seven thirty dash two thousand sixteen. And this relates to the public defenses within the corporate limits of the city of Garden City. The second and separate action would be ordinance number twenty-seven thirty-one, and this is the ordinance regulating traffic within the corporate limits of the city of Garden City. I will need to take those one at a time. If you have questions on either of those, I believe Randy's. Can I?
Mr. Delmore.
Or Mr. Delmore. Did you have anything else to present to the panel?
I was just going to summarize it a little bit. Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
What you'll see on the UPOC, which is the Uniform Public Defense Code, also the standard traffic ordinance, is that we have thirteen proposed changes that are the essential changes of what you'll see from the previous years. Out of those thirteen changes, nine of those are changes to allow us to follow what the state has done. Three of those are staff proposed, so I'll go through each one of those. If you have any questions on it, please let me know. First, on driving under the influence of alcohol. Right now, what we have is a fourteen-day mandatory jail sentence. The state counterpart for a second-time DUI is five days in jail. We proposed dropping that four days, so it's a ten-day mandatory jail sentence, however, increasing the fine on that from the fifteen-hundred-dollar fine to a one thousand seven hundred and fifty-dollar fine. The second one is the driving under the influence of alcohol, intoxicating liquor or drugs. This is removing the penalty for refusing to submit to a test. And what that is, is with the recent Supreme Court change for Kansas, they have removed that as a crime that you can charge separately. So a lot of these changes with the DUI involve that legislation. The Attorney General has asked the Supreme Court of Kansas to reconsider that ruling due to a Supreme Court of the United States ruling, so that might be changing. But for right now, we need to keep that with, going with the state law. And that actually covers the second, third, fourth, and fifth change. So getting us back on track to one seventy-five point one. It's a pretty simple definition to just add for the compression release engine braking system, which is pretty much what the Jake Brake is. The state counterpart does have that definition. The city ordinance did not include the definition, so we'd like to add that. Moving on to the next one, this is one of the staff-proposed changes. That's section one ninety-two for no valid driver's licenses. Essentially what the framework for it, that it is right now. If you have a first-time no valid driver's license, there's no jail time involved with that, and there's a two-hundred-dollar fine. When you start moving up the ladder on having some of those on your record, you look at a second that carries five days in jail and a three-hundred-dollar fine. Third carries a mandatory thirty days in jail and a five-hundred-dollar fine. And it keeps stepping up. It goes to sixty days, ninety, and one hundred and twenty days in jail. And each time that fine goes up as well. Staff is proposing actually changing that to include no mandatory jail sentence on a first. On a second, instead of doing five days, doing two days in jail as a mandatory jail sentence. On a third, instead of the thirty days, going with five days. On a fourth, dropping it down to ten, and so on and so forth. The fifth would carry fifteen days, and the sixth or subsequent would be twenty-five days in jail. The fine on the sixth or subsequent would be a thousand-dollar fine. Same with a fourth and a fifth. So that's one of the changes that staff would like you to approve.
My question is, is there a state statute on that, or is this just, is this governed by the city on this?
Yes, that's governed by the city. The state counterpart, they don't have any type of mandatory jail sentences at all on the state side for no valid driver's license.
Okay, just checking.
Sure thing. The next one is the UPOC section one point one. These are some changes to the definitions. Smoking subsection H has been proposed to be removed, which is smoking in a medical care facility. Also, the juvenile and correction facility officer definition is proposed to be removed also. That definition does not appear anywhere else in our ordinance, so that's probably one of the reasons why it's taken out of there. The third and final staff-proposed change is the change for domestic battery fine, and that's three point one point one. Right now, a first-time domestic battery fine carries a fine of four hundred dollars, and a second carries a fine of five hundred dollars. The staff is proposing to change those to five hundred for a first time and seven fifty for a second. That way, it fits into our structure with second-time offenses carrying a more harsh penalty. And the rest of the changes that we have deal with changes that are reflected on the state side. First of all, battery against a law enforcement officer. The definition of city attorney was removed because that's not used on the state side. And also on the next, three point twelve, breach of privacy. There are some federal laws that grant immunity to interactive computer services and radio comm carriers. That way, people who handle a lot of third-party traffic can be exempt from the breach of privacy laws. And I actually have not seen one of those charges in the last year since I've been here. I don't know if we've ever actually had one before, so. One of the really nice changes is under the minor in consumption or possession of alcohol. And you'll see here that, and this is also to reflect what the state has done. There have been three immunities added. So essentially, if you have a minor who's consuming alcohol at a party. alcohol at a party, somebody at that party maybe, you know, consumes too much alcohol and needs medical assistance. In the past, even if that minor would call the police, they could be prosecuted for minor, minor in consumption or minor in possession. So what it does now, it grants that person immunity, so if you contact the police and say, hey, my friend needs some help, will you please come take care of them, then that person, if they cooperate, is going to be immune from prosecution. Same with anybody else who would be at that party. So I think that's, that's good, that might, you know, save, save some lives of some people. And the very last one, we have is six point, six point one dealing with theft, we're, the state has actually changed that, so the threshold before was the municipal court could only handle theft cases that were under a thousand dollars. Right now, it's been changed on the state side to, that threshold's been raised to one thousand five hundred dollars. So now, if these charges, or if these changes are adopted, we can, in the municipal court, if we had a theft that was one thousand four hundred dollars, we can handle that now, rather than having to refer it to the county attorney's office. So these are the proposed changes, and the staff and myself would ask that you accept those.
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-seven-thirty-dash-two thousand sixteen.
Hang on.
We have a motion and second to approve ordinance number twenty-seven-thirty-dash-two-thousand-sixteen, which will be for public offenses. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty-seven-thirty-one-dash-two thousand sixteen.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to approve ordinance number twenty-seven-thirty-one-dash-two-thousand-sixteen, which will be for the standard traffic ordinance with changes. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item ten B-one, the governing body's asked to consider and approve amendments and additions to section sixty-two seventeen, use of, use or possession of marijuana. We have approved it with the ordinance twenty-seven-thirty-two-dash-two thousand sixteen. Mr. Devermees, are you presenting this one as well?
Yes. Hello again.
Been a while.
This is another change to reflect what the state has done on their side. Right now, municipal court can only handle a first-time possession of marijuana, which is a class A offense. The second offense used to be a felony, and so that would be referred to the county attorney's office, the district court would handle that. However, the state has bumped that up to where a third is a felony. The first has been changed to a class B misdemeanor, and the second has been changed to a class A. So what that does, it allows us to prosecute a second possession of marijuana when we previously had not been able to have that opportunity. And if somebody, of course, has a third possession of marijuana charged, that would some, be something that we would need to refer to the county attorney's office. So to coincide with those changes, staff asks you to approve changing the existing ordinance. Right now, a first-time possession of marijuana carries a minimum fine of five hundred dollars and four days in jail. And since we're adding a second onto it, we feel, we feel that it's appropriate to take the first-time offense and lower the penalties of that, since it is a, now going to be a, a class B rather than a class A. So our proposal is that the first-time possession of marijuana has a five hundred dollar fine, but only the two days in jail instead of the four. With the second possession of marijuana, we ask that that carries four day, the four days in jail, which used to be with the first, but a fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance twenty-seven-thirty-two-dash-two thousand sixteen.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve ordinance number twenty-seven-thirty-two-dash-two-thousand-sixteen, relating to possession of marijuana and establishing penalties. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item two C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a little bit of the general obligation bonds, which will be received today, and we're the chief of our man. The appropriate actions, if the commission so desires, would be the approval of ordinance number twenty-seven-thirty-three-dash-two thousand sixteen, authorizing the issuance of the GO bonds, and then resolution number twenty-six sixty-one-dash-two thousand sixteen, which prescribes the form and details of the bonds, in the amount of two million dollars of, or so, this item. I will turn it over to Brett with George K. Ball.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Brett Shogren with George K. Ball and Company, financial advisor to the city. This morning, at eleven A.M., we took public bids for two million dollars of general obligation Series A two thousand sixteen bonds for the city. A few weeks ago, we had a conference call with Moody's and your administration for an underlying credit rating. Your staff did an excellent job of representing your city, and they reaffirmed the city's credit rating of double eight three. Using that rating, eleven A.M. this morning, we received six bids, or seven bids, for the general obligation bonds. The lowest bid was from SunTrust Robinson Humphrey at one point six zero eight three four zero percent. Robert W. Barrett and Company was the second lowest bid at one point five three four two eight four percent. Northland Securities was next at one point five zero four six eight six percent. Raymond James and Associates at one point four nine six six one seven percent. Commerce Bank bid one point four six six four four zero percent. Country Club Bank was in second at one point four four five five nine five percent, and UMB Bank was the winning bid, winning lowest bid at one point four one zero three seven one percent. So Chuck Booley's, Chuck Booley's latest interest rate is the lowest one of history.
I was going to say, that's the lowest in thirty years?
Now, we're, we're currently at record low interest rates. They might have, they might have known Chuck was retiring and wanted him, his last public sale would be the best one ever. So our recommendation for the city is to accept the bid from UMB Bank at an interest rate of one point four one zero three seven one percent. We happy to answer any questions you may have.
I think we'd better approve it fast. I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance twenty-seven-thirty-three-dash-two thousand sixteen for an interest rate of one point four one oh three seven one percent.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve ordinance number twenty-seven-thirty-three-dash-two thousand sixteen, authorizing the issuance of the general obligation bonds and a little better. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next action required in C-two would be resolution number twenty-six sixty-one-dash-two thousand sixteen.
I'll move, we approve resolution twenty-six sixty-one-dash-two thousand sixteen.
I'll second.
Authorizing.
We have a motion and second to approve resolution number twenty-six sixty-one-dash-two thousand sixteen, describing the form and details of the bonds, Series A, two thousand sixteen. Is there any further discussion? The, the blank inside that paragraph reflects the one above twenty-seven thirty-three, correct?
Twenty-seven thirty-one.
Three, but just referring back to the one of them. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Thank you, guys.
Good job. It's a good, great way for you to start, right? Start out low.
Set the bar that low.
I might just say, Brett's been with us and been working with me for over three years, so. He, I'm leaving you in good hands, he's much smarter and better-looking than I am. I hope he, hope you'll be very happy with it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. He can have his own day in thirty years.
Yeah. Maybe I'll have my own day someday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for phase one of the Ranch House Senior Living LLC Development. This is the senior housing complex at twenty-eight oh two North Campus Drive. If you approve, the appropriate action would be to approve resolution number twenty-six sixty-two-dash-two thousand sixteen, and that is the resolution stating the intent to issue IRBs. Steve?
At your April fifth meeting, governing body approved a master resolution of intent for this development, with a total estimated development cost of thirty-eight million dollars. The issued before you today is phase one, which is basically the assisted living and skilled nursing portions of the project, with an estimated cost of twenty million. Resolution does not authorize the tax abatement per se, but it does reference a sixty percent amount. There are additional steps to go through, and Mary Carson will be happy to take over for me and explain all that good stuff, but essentially, as far as the resolution goes, we recommend your approval of the resolution. Go, Mary.
Good afternoon. As its title indicates, this is a resolution just stating the city's intention to proceed with phase one of the project, and it does not specifically authorize the, the tax abatement that you've already agreed to with the, with the developer, but it does indicate that you've found that it qualifies for that. We under state law to approve the tax abatement, there's a public hearing process that we will go through when we're closer to the project being complete, and we know, you know what final project costs will be. You were, there was also included in your packet a draft of a payment in lieu of tax agreement. We went ahead and prepared that and worked with the developer's attorneys to have it in, have it in place, and that simply states your agreement, and you will authorize this at the time you approve the actual tax abatement that, that you've agreed to. But it states that the project would qualify for a sixty percent at one and personal property tax abatement upon its completion. It states the conditions essentially, which is that they make that investment, obviously if they don't cut, follow through and/or undertake the project and then abandon it at some point, then there were provisions for the city to terminate the payment in lieu. Developers wanted to have this document presented and explained to you at this point along with the resolution of intent, so that's what I did, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about either document.
So they pay sixty percent of the...
No, they'll pay forty percent of the taxes that would be due.
Right off.
You're granting, granting them a sixty percent tax payment.
Sixty percent.
And they pay that payments in lieu, under the statute, when you issue industrial revenue bonds, the property is entitled to a one hundred percent tax exemption, and you then work out this agreement with, with the developers, and, you know, in some cases, it's a hundred percent payment in lieu of taxes. If you don't grant tax abatement, in your case, this project was determined to qualify for the sixty percent. I think based primarily on the, the size of the capital investment.
With regard to just the IRBs, that's a private financing that requires the city's approval and no, no cost to the city.
Correct. You are the conduit issuer, and this Ranch House Senior Living, their, their parent group actually intends to purchase their own bonds, and we're doing this process essentially so that we have a vehicle to grant the tax payment.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-six sixty-two-dash-two thousand sixteen.
I'll second.
A motion and second to approve resolution number twenty-two sixty-two-dash-two thousand sixteen, stating the intent of the governing body to issue industrial revenue bonds for the Ranch House Senior Living project, an amount of twenty million dollars. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Item E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request for annexation from TPNL Management Solutions. If approved, this would be ordinance number twenty-seven thirty-four-dash-two thousand sixteen, ordinance annexing land into the city of Garden City. Steve?
Okay. TPL, TPNL bought the seventeen point zero six acre tract on the west side of Farmland Road earlier this year, and has requested annexation of the property. They've already got turbine blades and tower sections stored on site, so it's immediately contiguous to the city limits and is an expansion of other area that TPNL either owns or leases for their operation, so. The city, the request also includes a request for city services, and in order for us to provide electric and future water and those types of things, we have to annex the property, so staff recommends adopting the ordinance.
I move we approve ordinance twenty-seven thirty-four-dash-two thousand sixteen, annexing land into the city of Garden City.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to approve ordinance number twenty-seven thirty-four-dash-two thousand sixteen, annexing land, and we have TPNL. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Steve?
Thank you.
Item C, if, or, I'm sorry, item F, the governing body's asked to consider and approve two cemetery ordinances. The first one approved would be twenty-seven thirty-five-dash-two thousand sixteen, establishing regulations for the operation of cemeteries, and F-two is, would be ordinance twenty-seven thirty-six, establishing these regulations. Bill?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. The first ordinance that's being brought for you, this is just reflecting, there's been some procedural adjustments gradually been made through the years, and after staff and city council reviewed those, we needed those to reflect procedures that were actually in place so that we're operating legally in accordance, in conjunction with the ordinance that had already been established. These ordinance that are before you, those part of your packet, most of the adjustments that are being made, actually the shift, it goes from the city clerk issuing the permits and collecting fees, shift to cemetery director and the staff there at the office. These have been done over the years, basically for convenience, and also there was a, a little bit of a gap between gathering information and keeping it updated between the office here, the administration, administration building, and our office. If somebody was to purchase a space, and we didn't know that, if they purchased it here, then we would, could resell that space unannually at cemetery office, so to avoid that and eliminate any problems there, these adjustments have been made, so we keep track of it, get a little closer with this. And any questions on that? Okay. The second ordinance obviously is our columnarium, which please announce, is progressing nicely. Actually, before lunch, we received our water feature, showed up this morning, and I called to make the final payment, and they informed me that it would be there today.
Eh.
No surprise, but it's unloaded, still in a crate, haven't got the open limit present yet, so we'll do that when we get back. But these ordinances, the second ordinance here, would reflect any of the regulations that were proposed and brought before you a couple of commission meetings ago, and this would allow us to control decorations and fees and the form of that project. Any concerns, thoughts?
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance twenty-seven thirty-five-dash-two thousand sixteen, present to the cemetery regulations.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to approve ordinance number twenty-seven thirty-five-dash-two thousand sixteen, establishing... A motion, a second to approve ordinance number 2735-2016, establishing regulations for the operation of the cemetery owned by the city. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion. We accept ordinance 2736-2016, an ordinance establishing fees and regulations for the columbarium at Valley View Cemetery.
Second.
A motion, a second to approve ordinance number 2736-2016, establishing fees and regulations for the columbarium. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve bids received August 10 for the US eight tree widening and access road project related to the metal art dairy nutrition plant. Steve?
Okay. You'll recall that last, in July, we attempted to bid this. We received one bid, which was over the engineer's estimate, so we had to reject it and rebid. We received bids last Wednesday in the packet, and we're here today to hopefully award a contract. The project was divided, the bid was divided into a base bid, which is essentially all of the earthwork, and then two alternatives for paving. Alternative one was entirely asphalt on the highway and access road. Alternate two was asphalt on the highway and included about a hundred and forty-four feet of concrete coming up to the stop sign out of the plant site to get the stopping and turning movements on the concrete and cause less maintenance problem force. And therein be the, the low base bid and alternative one was from Spore Land Development, Inc. at a million three hundred fifty thousand five fifteen and ninety-five cents. And the low base bid and alternate two was submitted by APAC Kansas, Inc., shares division at one million four hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. Both of those are under the engineer's estimate, which after the original bids were rejected, we reevaluated in light of the local construction economy and other recent bids and increased our estimate. You'll recall, we do have a one-point-two-million-dollar economic development grant from KDOT. But the development agreement with metal art dairy nutrition makes the highway and access road construction the city's responsibility. So it is, we had to come up with the difference, whether that's the hundred and fifty or the two-hundred and twenty more or less. Yesterday morning, Lorna Duvall and I were at the county commission meeting and presented this matter to them. And they authorized up to two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars from the economic incentive fund, which is contributed to by both city and county governments. And had always been the intention that any shortfall in the construction cost of this project would come out of that fund. So we have funding in place. And the county commission's recommendation would have been for alternate two, just from a long-range, long-term maintenance point. So the alternatives before you today would be to accept the low base bid and alternate one and award a contract subject to KDOT concurrence, or accept the low base bid and alternate two, also subject to KDOT concurrence. And we recommend either one. There was a letter in your packet from Spore Land Development, Inc., and towards Spore is here. An address?
Yes, please. Good afternoon, Labor Council. In the original bid in July, our numbers didn't change from the bid that we placed last week. However, our original bid was publicly published and was known to the other contractors what our numbers were. We feel like we've put it at unfair advantage in this situation where the other contractor only bid twenty thousand dollars underneath our original bid on one point four or five million dollars. That's a, that's an amazingly close bid. And I understand it saves you guys twenty thousand dollars. I guess my resolution to this problem is to accept the asphalt alternative, which would be our low bid, which is the same number we had on both bids. And if the city and the county and the dairy wants to do concrete, they could just do an unchanged order. Would be my, would be the fair resolution to this problem. I've talked to Matt about it. The city didn't do anything wrong. It was just, it's just an unfortunate situation that our numbers were publicly published prior to the second bid letting.
Is there a situation where that first bid, they wouldn't be publicly?
No.
I mean, we have to show them to reject them.
Yes.
So I understand where you're coming from, but, and you said, you know, you don't think the city did anything wrong. But when we have a bid that comes in too high, and even over the amount where we can negotiate, as this one did, you know, we're left to reject it and start again. And it sounds like one of the unfortunate things that contractors, you know, may be faced with on occasion.
Sometimes on a...
There's no solution in that comment, just to, you know...
Sometimes on a rebid, we're able to make changes to the actual plans and the scope of the project.
Change it enough to...
Change it enough that all contractors would need to reevaluate and come up with a new proposal. But in this one, there really wasn't anything to change. We did allow some extra working days and extended a month for the absolute completion date and did some things along that line, but...
Well, you're actually low, still low in the base bid on asphalt.
Yes, sir.
By a thousand dollars.
Yeah. But your recommendation is to take the concrete alternate. Is that correct?
Well, today, in front of the governing body, I'm not making a recommendation, but... The concrete approach is a longer life than less maintenance intensive piece of the project. There will still be highway improvements and hill and overlay things, but that'll be a KDOT cost. The access road on down will be a local cost. So from that aspect, it would be better for concrete.
Our original bid, whether it be asphalt or concrete, didn't change from the first bid to the second. The only thing that changed was, was the city raised their engineer's estimate, so it fell within the guidelines.
And added some days, added a month, which...
In this project, probably doesn't make, it's irrelevant to the whole project. But we honored our original bid and did what we said we were going to do. However, if you guys choose concrete, we aren't going to do the job. Somebody else is going to do the job.
Well, if the commission chooses concrete, the low bid, and according to our purchasing policy, would be the bid of APAC Kansas shares. If the decision of the commission is to select the asphalt alternative, that would be the low bid is Spore Land Development. The, that is, the, and that's really the decision. Both of those choices are within the purchasing policy guidelines of the commission on what you're supposed to do in the case of it was appropriately bid. The commission appropriately rejected it the first time because it was outside of the engineer's estimate and the threshold that we could correct back to get it within that item. And all of that is anticipated. And we like it when projects come in within the engineer's estimate. That makes our life easier. But there's a process described of what will happen when it's outside of the commission bid. Because we bid, or the city rebid the project, you've got, you've got bids before you. And the, the choice characterization that they, the unfortunate thing is a perception within the industry of how companies will react to that. But I don't think the commission should be left at all with the impression that your bid policy is somewhat abnormal.
No, it is absolutely not. That is not the case. It was just an unfortunate situation that happened. I wouldn't be here if we were low on both alternatives. I certainly wouldn't be here if we weren't low on the first time. So I'm...
Well, I understand your position. I just, you know, when we've got eighty-some trucks turning into this property with mail deliveries and eighty coming back out.
I, there is no...
I mean, it's, there's no question that probably concrete's a better solution.
What I'm asking you to do is approve the asphalt alternative today and change orders with concrete.
Yeah, but your alternative is six-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand.
Yes, we are twenty thousand dollars higher.
Right. So that's what we have to go by. You know, as far as if we go con, if you go asphalt and then go with an alternate, we don't know what your bid is. It can't be any more than six-hundred-and-sixty-one.
No, it's right there.
Yeah, so...
It is there.
So it's hard for us to pay twenty, well, eleven thousand, I guess, more.
Given, given the history of our company with the city and us being the only bidder the first time because of the dynamics of the job, I am certain down the road that it will happen again. It's happened multiple times with our company being ninety miles away, having the capacity to do multiple things within a construction job at the same time. And I guess, just in fairness, I think, I think we earned this job. I personally think we've earned it.
Well, you did.
And I know we're twenty thousand dollars higher, but I think we've earned it. And the way to get around the policy is to award asphalt and change order into concrete. And I fall short of saying, you know, we would do it for twenty thousand dollars less, but surely we can figure something out. I just, I just hate to lose the job.
Well, I understand.
I hate to lose that job when it was, when it was there and we didn't change anything. If we'd have moved our bid five dollars one way or the other, I can't be standing here. But we didn't change her, we didn't change her numbers. We stayed the same. You know, you guys didn't do anything wrong, nothing at all. It's just an unfortunate situation, and we'd certainly like to have the work. It's good work. The timing's good for us. It fits our company. And we'd love to do the work if you'd let us do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is your...
Comments?
Is that even an option?
I think the two options, the, you know, while at face value, the recommendation, the memo looks like no recommendation in kind of acknowledging that. I think our purchasing policy allows for two decisions that are within the hash marks of the policy. You can approve bid alternate number one, or you can approve bid alternate number two. Either of those are good, are sound decisions. I would not advocate for the commission to pursue anything that tries to quote-unquote "get around" the policy. That, we wouldn't be here if that was what we were supposed to be doing. So the, the commission has, has the authority to approve either of those projects. Could change orders be made to a project? Absolutely, that happens all the time. Are change orders made to a project described in one alternative for the purpose of getting around it and accomplishing the second alternative? I would, I would say that would probably be against why these would create a bid process in the first place. Probably prefer to ran into speak to what that, the implications of doing that might be.
I think it'd be subject to some type of challenge from the other bidder. If we didn't follow our policy, it looks like you're now engaging in an arbitrary and capricious approach to acceptance of bids. Not withstanding the fact that it seems unfair to Mr. Spore, but I can't recommend that you deviate from what the alternatives are that are presented to you.
And, you know, changes to projects motivated by other payers and those types of things would be outside. It's like we awarded something to Spore, and, or Spore's bid's to number one. You know, the plant or whoever rolls in two weeks into the project and says, hey, we'd like to talk about switching all that to concrete. Our contribution to the project is defined by the bid and the things we've organized. If somebody wanted to work a change order, I'll pay for the difference. Outside of that, I think we'd work with that in this case, just like we would in any other project. But, you know, your, your choices are pretty narrow here, as complicated as we want to make the story. You, you really have two choices that advance the project and one that sends us back to the drawing board again. And I would remind the commission that we got a developers agreement that said that we're going to accomplish this project by a certain date. That now has an addendum to extend that a little bit, but it's still not something we want to probably tend to pay on. Our recommendation is to approve one of those two options that moves the project forward.
Mr. Ray, I'll make a motion that we approve APAC of Kansas shares division for one million four hundred eighteen thousand eight fifty-six for concrete.
Is that alternate two?
Two, alternate two.
That would be subject to KDOT.
Subject to KDOT approval.
Second?
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion, a second for alternate two for one concrete alternate, one point four one eight, eight five six. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve memorandum of understanding between the city of Garden City and Legacy Motors identifying both parties' intentions to use a one-time cash payment in lieu of participation in the neighborhood revitalization program. That's a really long phrase, for a new car dealership project. The Legacy Motors project has been working with us, with city staff for some time. They are developing a Chrysler Dodge Jeep brand new car dealership at their existing location, which is on Fulton Street. The owners estimate the value of the improvements to be two-point-seven million. Now, if the project costs were adjusted to two-point-five million, which could be done without capitalizing the project, it would be eligible for the neighborhood revitalization program. That program in the, in the district covering this particular location reimburses the project for seventy-five percent of the property taxes paid on the newly created value of the property for ten years. created value of the property for ten years. An estimated project cost of two point five million, the revenue stream is projected to be worth five hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars over ten years. The city met with Legacy Motors and have negotiated an alternative for the city commission's consideration. The alternative would have the city pay a one-time incentive to the project in lieu of their participation in the neighborhood revitalization program. The amount of this is four hundred and fifty thousand ninety-eight dollars. This amount was derived by discounting the estimated cost of the project by twenty percent and then calculating a net present value of the ten-year revenue stream. We used the same net present value calculation that was used in all the other projects that are on the east side of town that used an increment financing tool. We have had discussions with other similar development projects within INRP zones. While this strategy has the city absorbing one hundred percent of the costs of the incentive upfront, instead of spreading the cost of the INRP incentive over all four taxing entities over ten years, we, staff feels that for some projects, this alternative tool is useful. But the following circumstances need to exist. One, the project needs to bolster another revenue stream for the city to the extent the city can afford to preserve the new property tax for use by other entities who have shown a willingness to participate in TIFs, RHIDs, in particularly USD four five seven in Garden City Community College. In, in this instance, new car dealerships are the biggest catalyst for retail sales tax and, and gaining a new car franchise or restricting ones already present have a direct immeasurable bottom line impact for the city's general fund. The other thing that must be present is if a use of a discounted upfront incentive can help remove a barrier to development, a more valuable incentive over time can't help address. In this instance, certainly a larger dollar amount in ten years would be attractive to a development. This particular development is faced with a stormwater issue that is, is difficult to overcome, not impossible to overcome, but difficult to overcome for the developers. And certainly, I think it's in their interest, not just ours, to take an upfront incentive, even if it is at a discounted rate, so that they have the cash necessary to address that type of development hurdle. And the long Fulton Avenue, it's low, it's flat, and has a history of stormwater issues and everything on this lot is sloping in the wrong direction for them is really what it boils down to and sort of reversing that or accommodating that is, is going to be expensive.
Are they going to have retention pond or what?
Well, yeah, they're required to comply with this, this stormwater plan, yeah. The, so, all that being said, it's the intention of both the city and Legacy Motors to pursue this one-time payment alternative. We would like the governing body to consider that today in the form of a memorandum of understanding. And so while not legally binding, this document does provide an opportunity for the commission to openly discuss this incentive and have the city commission indicate whether or not this is something they would like to have included in a developer's agreement on this project. Were available for questions? Jason Doherty's here representing the project. All kinds of staff people are here, but I think I address this from a, from our perspective, depending on which aspect of the job you need to know about.
How would this be paid? One time upfront?
Correct.
Before they start or?
No, it would be actually at the certificate of occupancy, I think, is when they get it, but they're able to draw it down from that amount for city expenses.
Oh, for?
Yeah.
Jason, you have anything to add?
Maybe a couple things. Thank you for hearing this. We, we took on this franchise about ten months ago. We've gone from eleven full-time employees at the time we did that to, I think, thirty-five now. So it's been a real challenge and we've been working pretty hard to, to get to this point. But, and, you know, the, this kind of capital investment allows us to move forward without it. I don't, you know, it's, it's a piece of something we have to have in order to complete the, the project. We just aren't, I don't have that kind of name in Garden City yet to have those kind of funds available. Tyler's with Western State Bank and they, they've agreed to, to move with us on this project again, but this is a, a part of something that he needed to be reassured that those funds would, would happen at the completion of the project for him to move forward. Just a couple of things. We have, over the last ten months, generated through our, through our retail sales, four hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars in sales tax, not just to the city, that's, that's total. The city's portion of that is about eighty-four thousand dollars a year at, at our present condition. At the completion of this project, we generate over, over that ten years, the size will be our projected sales and whatnot to generate. In addition to what we currently generate for the city, somewhere around eight hundred and fifty thousand in sales tax over that ten years to the city. So I, I think, I think it's a good project for, for the city. It's a good project for us, obviously, and we, we hope that you guys will approve that. And, you know, it's funds that we would use for everything, for purchasing equipment for our new facility, furnishing, furniture, having the money down available for the facility, you know, everything involved for, for growing, so.
Well, this is similar to Lewis's situation when they, they were going to build on campus and move that.
Yep, it's the same mindset and calculation for the campus side of the Lewis project that ultimately traded over to the, to the TIF district. Now, the TIF district, we couldn't do it because the increment, right? So the INRP and the TIF are both increment tools. It's just which would, pay before, pay after. And so we had already used the increment to build all the infrastructure for Shawman Crossing. So there wasn't an increment with which could be devoted. So we figured up another calculation that was less dollars upfront, also gave an opportunity that if there was that trigger for a start on that project would be in a start on district where other projects like this one wouldn't be. And so there was a kicker of that project went through.
Basically, all we're asking is for approval and a memorandum issued to him so he can get started on this.
My understanding is that the memorandum of understanding gives the developer, and maybe more importantly, his banker, be confident that the commission is politically behind a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar incentive that would be paid upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. It still needs a developer's agreement. They still have to submit site plans and do all the stuff that's required, a bullet building permit and do all those types of things.
And those things will all come before us at a later time. But today, all we have to do is just, if we're in agreement with it, then we're, we're on board from here.
Right. And Jase and, and Legacy Motors, the company's alternative, notwithstanding the, you know, the lender's opinion on whether or not they can move forward, from the city's perspective, their alternative to this would be presenting plans that would suggest a project of two point five million or less and, for the most part, automatically qualifying for the neighborhood revitalization plan. And that incentive, we've tried to estimate the value of that from all four taxing entities over, over the next ten years.
So if he, if he meets us.
Right, was that fair?
If he meets, well, we're expecting him to try to do less than two point five million and, and follows the plans that he's presented or going to present to us, then we're probably in agreement with the thing.
Absolutely. And from our opinion, the estimated value of the project, while we have to have on a permit and we've created a neighborhood revitalization plan that gives that number some purpose, it's a worthless number because ultimately, from a tax perspective, the only opinion of the value of the project that matters is the county's opinion of the project. The, Jason's estimated value of the project or our staff's estimated value of the project would, would not normally matter but for declaring eligibility under the INRP program. And we've talked about having that removed, not just because of that, but because it seems counterintuitive to reinvesting in a community that you would cap that. But we've done it. But that would require starting a whole creation of the program over again, which is a bit of an undertaking.
Well, I think it's, you know, we obviously can't do it for every business, but they do produce a lot of sales tax to this community, all the car, car dealerships. And it's a big, big incentive and, and some of that comes from outside the city, obviously. So I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the city, Garden City and Legacy Motors. LLC for one-time cash payment in lieu of participation INRP for new car dealership project.
Second?
Lot of stuff.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the memorandum of understanding between City Garden City and Legacy Motors. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, guys.
All right, thanks.
The item twelve B, the governing bodies asked to consider and approve a real estate purchase contract for the property located at one oh two South JC Street, Lot Six, Block One of Western Land Division. Sam?
Good afternoon, listeners. In your package, we came to you earlier about this lot. In this industrial park, all the drainage heads to this lot. And he was wanting to develop it. Well, he's going to have a, a hard time developing when it's underwater most of the time. And so he came to us wanting to sell that piece of property to us so we could develop a regional retention pond there. There's already a pond on this lot. We just increased the size of it. All the water drains down to JC. When JC's rideaway fills up, flows into that property and, and into that lot. So we either could do that or if he develops, wants to develop this lot, we're going to have to find an alternative solution to getting that water away from JC Street and this lot. The alternative is to spend two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we can get the easements from private property and get it over to our retention pond at, at Anderson and Fulton. And he is asking the purchase price of thirty-seven five for this piece of property. So our, the alternative is to either purchase this property or the second alternative is not to purchase this property and continue looking at ways to drain this property or this area and try to use some rideaway. But it's going to be pretty expensive for us.
This is one point six acres? Know what that says? Too little, I can't read it.
I don't remember what the size of that.
Lot six?
Yeah.
Six or eight, but yeah, I'd say six.
Ten.
Yeah, it's lot, it's lot six.
It is.
But that back portion, the one hundred by three hundred is the easement set aside for the pond or retention pond for this development when this was platted. Then also, if you look on Lot Four, there's a twenty-foot utility drainage easement that was there to convey drainage water coming from the rest of those lots. However, if you go drive down JC, a lot of those lots drain to JC and not to that easement. So they're draining down JC and then JC carries as much water as it can. We flood the end of it, it just spills over into this lot.
And those lots were developed like that decades ago.
Yes.
And that's nothing new.
No.
Before any of us were really involved.
There's no concrete or that street doesn't go clear down to the end of this property?
Well, and that would be something that if you wanted to develop Lot Six, you would have to extend the pavement down to the end of that property. And that's a pretty good expense for anybody who wants to develop that lot. Instead of doing that, now we can kind of create a swell in the right way, carries some drainage, adds some capacity there and then also develop this lot into a bigger pond.
Well, it's, it's, we save money by, we bind it and develop it into a pond rather than trying to move that water all the way west.
Yeah, because you're going to run into some difficulties with the railroad company to try to get any kind of easements on railroad. The other option would be go through the, the lumber store up there and, you know, again, what's that going to cost us to get through there? Do they want us to tear up their pavement when we go through there? So.
I make a motion to approve the real estate purchase contract for the property located one oh two South JC Street. Second, Dan?
A motion of second to approve the real estate purchase one oh two South JC Street. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you for your time.
You have an appointment too, don't you?
Yeah.
Next?
We do. The second item, we do have a vacancy on the traffic advisory board. Vicki Gurman has served for one term. She's willing to serve again for a second term. And so, so the board would like to, their recommendation is to let her serve for another one. Or you have the option of picking somebody else.
I move that we reappoint Vicki Gurman for another three years on the traffic advisory board.
Second?
Motion of second to reappoint Vicki Gurman to the traffic advisory board. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Those planted on that was twelve C. This is now twelve D. And if approved, if there's nothing to be pulled off the consentage in the item, it would be D one through three D.
What's your pull off to?
So D one, D three, A through D.
I move approve D one and three, A through D.
Second?
Motion to approve items D one and three, A through D. And a second for that. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
And while the agreement for a previous action by the commission would normally be considered, I think Randy was providing the opportunity, wish for you to refuse yourself from the.
You think I should?
Discuss.
Well, do you, do you like being a commissioner or you said you retire?
I might leave.
Then we just need a motion.
All right, item, item twelve, right, twelve, twelve D two is the consideration of approval of a purchase agreement for three oh two North Sixth Street. And at your previous meeting, the governing body identified Vivian Bankhauser's offer. And at your previous meeting, the governing body identified Vivian Finkhauser's offer from those that were available, I believe there were three, hers was the highest offer. So Randy's approved a purchase agreement based on Vivian's proposed payment of one hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Anything else we need to point out on the agreement?
No.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase agreement for three oh-two North Sixth Street.
A second.
A motion of second to approve the purchase agreement for three oh-two North Sixth Street. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Commissioner Finkhauser, moment here. Commissioner reports, Commissioner Finkhauser.
Wow, I got here this time. Chuck Booty, I, I think that's quite an outstanding retirement when he gets the lowest, the lowest rate we've ever had in, what, thirty years? So what a way to retire. So the other thing was the traffic report, I thought that was good this morning and enjoyed that, second time I've heard it, but that was at the Lions Club, Sam presented that Lions Club. And he approves every time he gives it, so appreciate that. But other than that, that's all I have.
Commissioner Sessom?
I would like to thank the Garden City Police Department on having officers at the schools on the first day of school. It was nice to see them there greeting students as well as parents as they're coming in. So thank you for that. Also, National Night Out was a great success. Rode along with, actually rode along with the chief. I got there a little late, I was gonna ride along with one of the officers, but great block parties, real successful everywhere we went. It was a lot of excitement. Some of the parties were bigger than the others, but, you know, great reception by the community on the officers as well as the, the fire department. The kids really loved the fire department because they gotta run through the water and everything, which.
Some commissioners did too.
Yeah, something like that, but we won't go there. But outstanding, you know, it's great to ride along and see what the officers do on a, on a daily basis and just get out and visit the community and, along with the police officers. So I recommend that probably the commissioners need to do a couple of ridealongs just to kind of get a flavor of what they do on a, on a daily basis. You know, it's a tough job and it's made even tougher in this climate that we're in in the nation. You know, locally, we, we support our officers and our fire, and our first responders overall, our fire department, police department, sheriff's department, KHP, EMS, but in other places in our country, it's not that way. And, you know, we have, you know, I give them a lot of respect for what they do, you know, on a daily basis, so thank you for all you guys do. I'd like to thank the street department on getting out and painting the lines on the crosswalks. Notice they're still out there getting some of them finished up, but thank you for that. And just remind the community, school has started at Garden City and just slow down in the, in the school zones down to twenty miles an hour 'cause kids are getting to and from school and trying to get them in a safe manner. And also be mindful of the crossing guards as well 'cause they're out there in the busier intersections trying to get the kids across those heavy traffic intersections. You know, great to see what the municipal court's done and being innovative and, you know, becoming more efficient in what you guys are doing. Great job to the staff and, you know, what you guys have done in the municipal court, you know. Great to see the state come along and through on providing funding for the transload facility. Kind of worried about that, you know, where the state of the finances are, but great to see that that project is moving forward in the community and that'll be another big asset for us here at Garden City, so that's all I've got.
You didn't leave anything.
You can go ditto.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go that far. Thanks, Sam, for the eleven o'clock meeting today. It'll be real interesting to, to see if you take that to the CIP and see how they come up with some of their inputs on there, because they, they really think in different terms a lot of times. So it'd be really, they could be the voice of the community on some of those things and they could be really interested in, and I'm looking forward to seeing that. I wanna just generally thank all of our, our, our people that support us as commissioners, the Matt, the staff, and, and one thing I've said many times before, our greatest resources are three hundred-plus employees and they go out and do a tremendous job every day and I wanna thank them. As far as the, the neighborhood night out, I would, I challenge other people to, to have them next year. They can be a lot of fun, it's a good way to get, get your people in the, in the, involved into it. The city will come out and help you block the street if you have to, to make it safe, but have a good time. And it was fun. I will say I was, I had my fair share of hamburgers and hot dogs. You know, it's like going to your, going to your mama's house for Thanksgiving and two hours later going to your mother-in-law's, you gotta eat the same amount. It was a lot of fun and, and like Sessom said, there, there was a lot of smiles and, and young kids and, and I'm sure glad we had young police officers, 'cause they could take up the athletic involvement with them, you know. I just laughed the first time. It was a fun night, that's all I have.
Commissioner Dolan?
I also enjoyed this morning's information about the transportation study and look forward to seeing what, what moves forward. And I wanted to thank Jared Coleman and all the people in that department for finding ways to be more efficient, save money and streamline their operation. That is fantastic. Thank you. Fall ahead.
Yeah, National Night Out, I very much enjoyed also. I rode with Officer Bee Hill, fine young man, chief, and, and I didn't ever get it done formally, but I wanted you to know that your officers, a lot of which weren't on duty, they came back to do that and, and there was a ton of enthusiasm and it was a great evening. And the people that we visited, you know, I really could feel them, you know, a little bit wild and, and very, you know, appreciative of all of us, different groups taking our, our time to come out and visit them. So that, that was a good deal and I think we should do it again next year. The traffic study I enjoyed, I, I see that's starting to focus and line up, you know, put some projects and, you know, some timeframes and so that's good to see, there's some good ideas in there. And so, as was mentioned, will take a lot, you know, time, nothing will happen immediately except for maybe some painting projects, which we can, we can do and, and have been successful with, so it was a good presentation. Yesterday, I attended the International Rescue Committee quarterly meeting, Chief Utes and a couple, three of the captains and Sergeant Roush, I think, were there also. And the International Rescue Committee works with the refugee population and, and so I, you know, that's more of a, people in the day-to-day operations, you know, trading information about what, you know, what's going on. But I enjoyed attending that one to learn a few things and, and see, you know, as with everything, a group of people out there really working to try and make a difference. And so that's, that's always encouraging, so I think that's all I have too. If there's nothing else, enjoy.